Yes, I remember that one.
I'm sorry, I didn't look for the meeting material, it doesn't show up.
Good morning, folks. I've got nine oh one, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The Board of Selectmen are present. Attending here in person also is Fire Chief Paul Varga. And I notice Karen Zulik is joining us through Zoom. And you're from the public.
Bill, I have some comments on the citizen stuff, but.
Okay, the only thing I'm, because you're sitting over there is to speak up, I'm not sure.
I have some comments.
Yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear him.
I have some comments on the citizen policies and procedures, I didn't know if you wanted to wait till then, or you want me to just do it now?
I didn't know, I didn't know that our work product was going out yet.
No, the proposals, the drafts.
Bill?
Yes.
I didn't know that we were sending out our draft.
Um, I was at the meeting, the last meeting, and I listened.
Right, we didn't, we didn't have it out there, I only had a limited number of copies, because it's a work product that we're not done with, and I was a little concerned about getting out there before we got it together. But, okay.
We, why don't we postpone any discussion, it is on the agenda, and we can take it up then.
Well, actually, I'd rather he made his comments during persons to be heard.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, the, my question was, I, I noticed in the, in it, that there was a change from a full page ad for departments uh, to a half page ad, and I'm wondering what prompted that? And also, um, there seems to be a discrepancy in some of the things that, um, like, who's allowed to publish and who's not? Uh, for instance, you have, I should say, listed would be uh, in that half page ad, or like the Boy Scouts, the Social Club, Joshua Trust, who while they're nonprofits and, and obviously are, are important in town, but there's other agencies that would also fall under that that are not listed, so I, I didn't know, like, this was something that, we're trying to make this into a pay for itself newspaper, or is it still just something that allows people in town to, to print stuff in it, and like departments to put information out there? So that was my only question.
All right, we'll cover that when we get to, we'll cover that when we get to the topic on the agenda.
Any more public to be heard? Hearing none, um, first selectman's briefing. Uh, just information sake, I'm gonna have to leave shortly after ten o'clock, unfortunately, I've got a vet appointment um, that I can't change, postpone, so.
Yeah.
Just to give you folks a heads up, we've had some more vandalism at the Astor Memorial Park. Uh, the first one, which occurred about, oh, two or three weeks ago, was a pickup. We've now got some ATM damage there, it's been reported to the state police and it's under investigation.
Um, according to social media, um, it sounds like there, they have a, there is a pretty good idea of who can, who did this.
Who did the?
Well, I think the social media, and it was pulled down right away, because there was a picture of a person that was on there.
Two people.
And it turns out that that picture was taken last October, um, nothing to do with the recent damage or anything else. Um. And there was a person, I'm not gonna identify that person, it's, it's a, uh, a minor, and the name has been uh, submitted to the state police, but it's in their hands for investigation. And that picture, from what I was advised, was not taken on town property, it was taken in on private property.
Yeah.
I did not see it, but I, I got several calls about it being on the social media.
Well, and we do know that we have a number of, uh, primarily young people that are out on ATVs and on, uh, motorbikes. Uh, I've certainly act, I stopped a couple of kids on my own road, on the dirt part of Sea Car Road.
It's an, it's an issue that we're experiencing throughout town, and state police are very frustrated with it and, and what the limits are. Um, part of the criteria that state police reminds me of is that they cannot do anything unless they see it happening, or they have somebody that can attest to the people doing it, preferably taking a picture or whatever, and then they can follow up on it. Uh, but it's, it's frustrating, and it is an issue with dirt bikes and ATVs all over town.
Well, I have advised the people. Yeah, I have advised the people that have, um, talked to me about it, to, if they can, get a picture, if they know who the kid is, they actually know the kid, or whoever it is. Um, and then call the police.
Yeah.
Just call the troop and let them handle it.
Uh, the after-school program registration expires tomorrow, um. If you know of anybody or anybody's listening, we highly recommend they get their names in. Um, if needed, the, uh, uh, drawing is scheduled for the eighteenth. Um, I'm assuming it will be at the school, um, and we're working out the particulars on that.
So, Bill, um, I'd like to add something to the agenda about this. Um. Uh, what I'd like to add to the agenda is that the Board of Selectmen, uh, is, uh, hiring these people. There was something said at the Board of Ed meeting where, um, statement was made that they hired the people, and know these are, these are going to be town employees. So I think we have to do something formal to at least hire them.
Yeah, we, we've publicized that, I don't know how many places that these people would be employed by the town, but we can, we can emphasize that.
So I'd like to, I'd like to add.
There is discussion on the agenda, uh, for the after-school program, so we can, we can talk a little more about that if you can.
Okay. So I think, uh, we're gonna need someone to make a motion to hire the three individuals that, um, were chosen.
I, I have not even, I, I know the, I've seen the applications, um. Uh, we can address that, I, I agree.
All right, uh, I don't have their names in front of me right, right now, but, uh, I can give the names afterwards, and we can get them in the minutes.
Okay.
Uh, but I'd like to make the motion that we hire those individuals.
All right, um, can we wait till we get to that part on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the school, after school.
We're still in briefing right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I also have something I want, I'd like to add to the agenda, but just for information purposes for this phase of the agenda. The, uh, tank is in, it's operational, and we're finishing up, and what I'd like to do is add to the agenda, um, a new item, um, because some question has come up, we, and, and it's about doing the final phase of the, the work, which is the paving. And I've got some information on that, I want to share with the board and make sure we're, uh, on the same page on that.
So what is the item you'd like added? I'll be glad to make the motion.
Um. Uh, discussion regarding finalizing of the tank replacement project at the school.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, well, just go, and we'll move it at this time, is, vote on that, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, presently, as, as you know, we had submitted a budget, uh, for that project of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, for our capital improvement budget. A hundred and thirty-five was contributed by CNR from the town, and a hundred and thirty-five was contributed by the non-lapsing fund. So-called, also what we used to call a one percent or two percent fund at the school, so that total of two seventy. Presently, the last billing, I asked for somewhat of a finalized billing from SSE, who is our primary contractor. We're at eighty-five thousand. Um, as you know, in order to save a considerable amount of money, we went ahead and purchased the tank ourselves through the town. That total cost total, uh, and I'm rounding this off, uh, at sixty-five thousand. Now, the final phase of the work that has to be done is what we were referring to as amicite patching um, around where they put the new tank in. Um, that consisted of somewhere between seven, depending who you're talking to and the measurements, between, um, fifteen hundred and two thousand square feet of patching to be done. Um, in talking with, 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 um, the school superintendent, and I understand she was, uh, in discussions with the, the, uh, chairman of the board, they asked us to consider paving that whole area in lieu of doing a patching. That entire area consists of somewhere between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand square feet. Um, we went and got, I had Public Works get three different prices, we got one price from a contractor who said they couldn't do it between forty and fifty thousand to do that. Two other prices I got, one was, um, twenty-six thousand to do that, and the low one was twenty-four thousand to do the whole area. So if, if, for discussion purposes, we add that twenty-four thousand, we end up with a total cost of the project of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Meaning that the Board of Finance will decide on, on what we do with the balance, I've talked with the treasurer, who has a suggestion that it just go back into CNR. Um, I'm not sure how that equates with the money that the school equated. But that would mean about ninety-six thousand would return either to CNR or be split up between CNR and the, uh, um, the school.
Non-lapsing fund.
Non-lapsing fund, now, the only thing that is not included in that, so that ninety-six thousand will be going up somewhere, I have not got a specific figure. We had somewhere around ten thousand gallons left of oil in that tank, and we actually sold that back to the contractor. So that's an amount that I have not indicated in any of the totals that I gave you, but that.
And how, how much was it, how much was that again, Bill?
Which one?
The one you just told me about selling the.
It was, it was about ten thousand gallons we had in there, and we sold it for fifty cents a gallon back to the contractor.
Okay.
So it's in the area, and I don't have a solid figure, but it's in the, my guess is it's in the area of four to five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, what I'm, what I'd like to do, and I recommend to the board, and the low bid contractor can go in there, start next Monday, and get this completed before school starts, I'd like to go ahead and, and uh, authorize to go ahead and do that entire back area of the building where, where the playground is in the back of the school, well, in the front of the school. Um, around the tank area.
So, let's see, then, I would, I'll make a motion to, uh, do the anocite. What, uh, it's not patching, it's, uh, whatever you wanna call it.
It's a resurfacing, a re, you know, for approximately a thousand square feet.
Resurfacing from approximately eight thousand square feet, um, for a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand. Um. For the school.
Sounds good, is there a second?
And, and are we gonna do verbiage in terms of how it will be just added into the program, then split between the?
Well, I think we'll let that sort out, because that, I, I did mention it, it, why don't, if you're comfortable, make a second, and then we can have discussion.
All right, I'll second.
Right.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor that's been, uh, made and seconded. My, my thought is that that money, we can discuss internally our recommendation, I talked with the treasurer. She said the simplest way to do it would be just to put the whole thing into CNR. Um, in, in other words, it's CNR right now and not ex, not being expended, okay?
Okay, so if, if we do that, it's the Board of Finance that has to take it out.
That's, and that was gonna be my point, it's, it's a decision for the Board of Finance to make.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, I think we need, we, we need, um, some input from the school if they're comfortable with that, obviously. The next round of CNR, uh, allocations is gonna in, include some of the school's requests. So it just depends which, which pocket it comes out of with the school, but I think the Board of Finance has delivered that.
So I'd like to amend my motion then. Actually enhance it, if it's okay with the second, uh, which is to, uh, uh, request that the, uh, make a recommendation to the Board of Finance that they, uh, take the monies left over from that project, what's been spent so far, and move it into CNR, and then use, uh, twenty-five thousand to um, cover that eight, approximately eight hundred thousand square feet.
Okay, it's, it's eight thousand square feet, but it, the, the money we're taught, we're, we're we've already appropriated two seventy, so they don't need to approve that eight thousand, it's gonna be considered all within the tank replacement project.
But I thought the thing.
The only money they will be considering is the surplus money that's left over from the entire project, which right now is, is a figure somewhere between ninety-six and a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so you don't think that it's a matter of us asking them if it's okay if we add to the project?
I don't believe we have to, as long as we're comfortable, and I, I'm comfortable that it is part of that project.
I mean, when I add fifty-five thousand plus the, that the, then billed the sixty-five thousand that the town has paid for the tank. The re-investment of five thousand dollars from the oil that was sold, and now we're talking about an additional seventy-five, I mean.
Twenty, twenty-four thou, well, the motion was twenty-five.
It was only twenty-five, twenty-five thousand.
Okay. I mean, yeah, we're. I mean, yeah, we're well within our budget.
Yeah, we're somewhere around a hundred thousand, between ninety-five and a hundred thousand. That, Catherine, that will be the amount that the Board of Finance has got to determine. Do we just leave it in C N R as unexpended? Or is there something that the school wants it back into their non-lapsing fund?
Well, the, yeah, there'll be a decision, and to be quite candid, the fairest decision would probably just be split it. Half of it would go back to the non-lapsing fund and half of it would go back to the uh, town or stay in C N R.
And I I agree, that was my in initial thought, um. But I shared with you, I did take it up because I like to get several opinions of the input that we got from the treasurer.
Well, I think it's been a good partnership on getting this done, so.
Oh, it has, right along.
Since both both parties put up the same amount of money.
You know, and and, no, we don't have to belabor this, and there's a motion on the floor, but. It, this thing with the playground area, I was up there, took pictures and everything. It's cracking. It's if we don't do it now, we're gonna have to be doing it shortly and probably end up costing us double. So it just makes sense to get it done now.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, we already did that, that was the original motion. Chris, are you comfortable with what we've said, what I said for a motion for the first part? When I, when I did the original motion. Which is to um.
Expenditure for the eight thousand square. For the entire eight thousand square foot area to be resurfaced or amicited. School project.
And that would be from the um, monies already available for the project.
Correct. You have that, Chris?
I think so.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now they can get, they can get to work on Monday, that would be good.
Absolutely. Okay, um, item five, acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of July seventeenth. Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been uh, made and seconded. Any uh, additional corrections, admissions? No, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Prove minutes of the regular meeting of the seventeenth.
I was not.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second that is um. Roger was excused. Um, any corrections or additions?
Uh, you said that was the seventeenth, right? He was, he's in the minutes. It shows that he's there.
So we do it on the seventeenth or last week, I'm sorry.
Seventeenth, he was there.
Okay. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, our regular meeting of July twenty-fifth. Was that, you were at that one too, right?
Yep.
All right, do I have a motion? We have a motion that's been made for the minutes of the twenty-fifth. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, additions, corrections?
Finish what you're doing.
I haven't needed.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Approved. All right, regular meeting of August seventh, which I is the one.
Roger was not.
Roger was not there. Do I have a motion?
Hang on, just a second, okay?
Those minutes aren't submitted yet.
I was gonna say, I don't have them.
Okay, never mind, we'll carry them for our next meeting. Thank you. Hear from boards, commissions, and committees. Hear from boards, commissions, and committees, hearing none. Um, the status of the after-school program. Uh, as I mentioned in my briefings, the registration formally closed on the sixteenth. I don't have specific numbers for you, but I understand that the registration is coming a little lighter than we were expecting. But um, we'll get a report back from the school at the end of business day tomorrow and take it from there. The Board of Fin, I went to the Board of Finance meeting last Thursday and they did not have a quorum. And they rescheduled a special meeting to address authorizing the Board of Selectmen. To uh, set up a um.
A fund, yeah, the funding line items.
Uh, which will be reflecting revenues and expenditures. And that meeting is tonight at six-thirty. I'll let you know how that goes. Uh, hopefully.
Do you know, do you know if the uh, all members were notified that there is a special meeting beyond having an email arrive? Some of them were on vacation. I'm not sure what the communications are within that board.
Many of them are. I know I attempted personally to try to call a couple to remind them of the last meeting. But uh. I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, out from the board itself, you know, um, I'm trying to remember who the chair is.
Well, John Kopeck is acting chair at the moment. And that was also on their uh, agenda. He's also the secretary. And I believe he will be temporarily chairing tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
I can check with him and try to remind some people, but I.
Yeah, I know that um, before when there was some trouble. With scheduling, that um, some people didn't have the phone number of who to contact.
Okay.
So they weren't sure what to do.
Yeah, they were, they were one short last Thursday, and it's unfortunate, but it happens. All right, uh, item B, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashford School Roof. It's premature for us to do that.
I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna, Bill, I thought we were also gonna talk about hiring the three people for the childcare program.
Okay, you're right, thank you. Um, do I have a motion?
Uh, yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't have their names in front of me, uh, but they were all very good candidates that were chosen. Uh, so I'd like to make the motion that we hire the three candidates, and it needs to be laid out in a way where we are saying. Um, for what roles. So two of them are assistant leads and one is a helper. And we have the. Hourly rate. Uh, for them.
Sarah Wilson. The other was, uh, and I think it was. Um, her last name is Demick. I believe she was the, going to be the um. Uh, helper.
Yeah.
And the other lady, her name escapes me.
Yes, so I think we, we can fill in the names afterwards. I think that would be fine. I just wanted to make sure that uh, when we do, that we indicate that who are. But which two are the um, assistant leads? And they're being hired at, I believe, what was it, twenty-six dollars an hour?
Um, the lead was going to be twenty-five dollars an hour.
Oh, that's right, and it was twenty-two.
Have, and I believe the assistants were gonna be at twenty-two.
You're right, twenty-two.
And the uh, helper was somewhere between seventeen and nineteen. And I don't know what was discussed at the interview.
Uh, we didn't, um, we just stuck with the amount of the uh, numbers that the Board of. Uh, Selectmen had indicated.
Why don't we go with eighteen for now, and we can always make adjustments if we have to.
Okay.
Are these part-time? Do we stipulate?
Yes, they're part-time without benefits. And they're all eager to get started. I ran into one this weekend.
All right, is, so that's a form of a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor to second to hire the three individuals that were interviewed for the Ashford School. Program emphasizing that these will be town employees. Um, work through our finance department. As well as all revenues and expenditures will also be handled to our uh, finance department. No further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay, item B, uh, consider funding options related to the initiation of the Ashford School Roof, premature for that right now. I did forward you this morning, um, I I received Cindy had sent on to us. Some questions by statutes that were submitted by those who did the walkthrough last week. And that is in process that I I believe by statute, the way that works is that the uh, building committee. Will um. Be uh, responding to those questions in writing. Is it on the webpage? Chris, is that how that's gonna be done?
The questions, I got the questions, I have to give those to Karen. Uh, but the the question deadline is over.
Correct.
Um, Friday is the answer deadline at noon and Friday afternoon. Karen will be putting up the answers and that's.
On our.
We stipulates that the answers will be on the town website.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's see, you sent that at eight-twenty-two this morning? Who is?
Well, I, I assume it was around that time. I got in here a little earlier than that. But I saw them, I sent them on to you guys.
All right, and so we don't need to take any action on this.
No, no, it's just an FYI.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item C, Ashford Citizen, continue review of draft establishment policies and procedures. Relating to the uh, production and content of the Ashford Citizen.
So, um, I think, uh. If you'd like, I can respond to Paul's questions. At least I can start.
Yep.
Uh, I've given you the uh, updated version. I put in all the changes that were requested at our last review. And um. Uh, so if I understand correctly, the three of us decided that. Uh, we would have ha- half pages instead of full pages for uh, groups that are not. Part of the normal town departments. Is that correct?
My, my recollection is that we decided as a group. That half-page only was only related to paid um, ads.
Actually, what you did was when we were going through it, I will pull it up here, because I wrote the notes right. Where it was, is where we have that second list of of folks that get to put something in for free. That's where you had me change the wording to half-page. Also, it says half-page.
What, what page is that?
That is the.
Page three.
Bear with me, I just gotta pull it up here. Too many things out this morning. Uh, here it is. Okay, so it is on page three. And it was down in that s- uh, second bullet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what you had me put in there was uh, not to exceed one-half page.
Well. Uh, may- maybe I I didn't articulate that the way that, it was, it was, it started off, as I remember, and I don't have it in front of me, but. Your prior draft started off with one-half page.
No, uh, well, give me a second. I've got that too. Um, when all is said and done, kind of doesn't matter, but I've got, I do have it here. What, what do we feel it should be? Now, I know I was approached by someone from the Arts Council. Uh, via email, asking, saying they were concerned because they typically put their ads out for their special events. On a full page.
Yeah, and I don't, my, my recollection, and again, if. I didn't articulate my concern with the wordage of the last draft was regarding paid ads only.
Oh, we were on, okay, we were on this section.
I don't think, let me just finish. I don't think we wanted to eliminate, obviously, the Babcock ban or the Rec Committee or whatever. I think that'd be next to impossible to a half a page.
Oh, the Rec Committee, the Rec Committee is not limited.
Well, I I don't think the other group should be limited either.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Um, I was just, that's where we were when we were talking about it, and so that's where I put the change in. So, uh, what we're saying then is, uh, do you have any kind of a limit? You know, you don't want something, well, someone putting in three pages.
No, I, but we have language in here, it's at the discretion of the editor. If we don't have room and Paul comes in with five pages from the fire department, um, we're gonna tell him we can't handle it.
Well, when we have wording that already covers that, in fact, we have wording that says it could be cut off. Uh, submissions could be cut off before the fifteenth, if in fact, they've already. Uh, the editor's already received enough to fill up an entire citizen.
Right.
So, uh, as far as what this bullet should say now, down at in the, on the third page at the bottom. So what we want to say is, if I understand correctly, articles and ads will be published. At no charge, just like above, at no charge for the following groups and organizations. And what we did have was each will be limited to one submission per month. Sound right?
I think you just eliminate what you've got underlined here, not to exceed one-half page.
I know, I just, I just said that.
Yeah, I think you just eliminate that, and we're all set.
Okay, I can fix that. Everybody in agreement?
I think that's good.
Okay. Uh, I think the problem we were having is that we have some paid ads. Where it's full page and they're just blasting at us. So I, you know, as far as these other groups, these are groups that are, I would say, pretty beneficial to the community. And um, so I totally agree with them being able to do a full-page ad. Or article.
The only other, and I I don't think Roger was here, the only other comment. And um, that I had was included in that, under that second bullet. I thought it would be good to have the Democratic and the Republican Town Committees added. As long as they weren't related to an a- a specific election, if they had fundraisers or something like that. Um, and I, I think we could kind of defer to any more conversation on that until Roger joined us, whatever. I'm not gonna hold this up if they're not in there, but I just, I think they are one valuable arm that we utilize, both committees. Uh, to attract volunteers and and that for the community. And um, if they had a fundraiser or whatever, either one, I would not have objection to letting him run an ad. But um.
Well, we've already said that we don't put, it says the following will not be accepted, political ads and articles.
I get, and and I think we could qualify the difference between.
Party organizations.
A a party organization or a party, party organization pushing one to a candidate or a slate of candidates. Or the other, strictly limit them, if they have a barbecue or a cookout or something, as a fundraiser or a dance. Give them the opportunity to publicize that.
Yeah, but the Democratic Party did our spring fling or something like that in the Hungarian Club. It'd be nice to get the word out to everybody.
Uh, the spring. I'm, I'm not in agreement with putting political ads in our Ashford Citizen. Uh, what you brought up before, Bill, was that uh, you were looking to fill slots and get people to volunteer. When in fact, we already have something in there that is put in there by the Selectmen's Office. This says, hey, here are the openings that we have, we're trying to get them filled, and it actually indicates. Um, what party needs to fill them.
Well, you're talking about two sides of a conversation here. What I was saying was that either one of those committees, the town committees. If they wanted to have an ad for a particular fundraiser that was not specific to an election or a candidate. That we would let them do that at no cost.
I'm trying to figure out how a fundraiser. Is not really contributing to an election, because, Bill, you well know that when we do fundraisers. Either party, it is in fact to get people elected.
And 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 hopefully to try to attract, I'm not gonna go to war on this, Catherine, if if we don't want it, we don't have to put it in. I just think that we're we're being a little foolish if we don't recognize that both of those town committees. Perform a function other than just getting people elected, than attracting volunteers. And if we could assist them, because it's a critical part of this town right now, to attract more volunteers. If we could assist them and they assist us in those efforts, that's what I'm trying to accomplish.
Each of the parties.
War on this, if if.
Yeah, I was gonna say, each of, each of the parties has mechanisms to do that, outside of putting in citizens, citizen.
Your, your opinion. Roger.
I'm just only in the sense that a, a lot of people go to the Ashford Citizen to look for events. You know, and.
But they look.
Problem, I got no problems with, fine, let the Democratic Party, you know, if they're gonna have a fundraiser, let them pay for it.
Okay.
No. We're talking about not putting the ads in.
I, okay, I mean, I'm not seeing where you're coming from, but I can, we can talk about it later.
Okay, anything else? Paul, did we answer your questions?
Yeah, he had one, one other one too.
Let me just see. Yeah, the second one was like, i- in that second line, that second bullet, you specifically name. Certain.
Groups.
Entities in town.
Um, yep.
But, like, we just talked about two others that, uh, but there's others too that. I just don't know. Why, I guess, for lack of a better term, why those, some of those entities get a pass. And some others were not.
What did we best?
Could you please give an example of some bone?
Little League, I don't know if the Little League even exists, or, or, I mean, I know Parks and Rec is on the other one.
Parks and Rec, doesn't Parks and Rec do the stuff for the Little League?
No, they do not.
Um, I would have, I would have no problem putting the Little League in.
Well, I mean, I, like I said, I don't even know if they, I think they combined with Mansfield, but the.
I, I think the part of the rationale, and when we started discussing this initially. Was, I, I'll just use the Hungarian club. They work on very limited amounts. They're a social orientated group. And as is ASCO, the Ashford Senior Citizen Group. And we wanted to assist them, it's minimal financially, but give them an opportunity to utilize the paper to attract more people. Because they are social orientated sort of organizations. Uh, I would, no problem, and, you know, miss somebody else with the Little League group or whatever.
Well, and then, I mean, I guess the other thing that comes to mind is like, you know, you have the Boy Scout camp. Well, there's, there's other nonprofits in town. There's the Wing of Land Trust, there's the Salvation Army Camp, there's the whole, I mean.
Well, I think what they, what I.
I, I guess, originally, the way I understood it was town departments or directly. Look for lack of a better term, funded town entities. Uh, and, and I'm not saying that those people shouldn't have the availability to do it. I'm just saying that. I worry about the implication of naming a, a few and then leaving others out and how that, the message it sends.
I, I think that if another group wants to be included. I think if another group wants to be included, all they have to do is approach us so we can figure out, you know, who they are and what they need.
Yeah, and, and I, I think we've left room for discretion by the editor.
Oh, you still have, I'm just saying, like, I, I just read the list or, and, and I was like, you know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, well, we should just maybe sit there and say nonprofits, you know.
I, I wanna do all nonprofits.
Cover it in a, in, in the discretion of the editor, a- and also in the fact that. Um, it, it gets reviewed by the first selectmen, so if, if. The editor were to come to the first selectman and say that this group wants to put this in, but I don't know if they fall under this category. It can be put out for discussion and even amongst the Board of Selectmen if necessary, but. Um, I just, when I saw it, I was just like, you know, I can just see where, again, and I, I.
We started some, you know what we started. We started, we had to start in some place.
Originally, we talked about. Indicating all five oh one C three, who were by, by nature would be exempt. And then through discussions, we kind of eliminated that for some reason. Um, to address that sort of thing, but I, I think we're covered, Paul, because we leave certain discretion to the editor. And or the first selectman.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
But these, not carved in stone, I mean, they're, they're, they're to replace something we never had before and try to be more specific. And if they have to be modified down the line, I think they can be.
Yeah, what we wanted to do was we wanted to start somewhere to make sure that people understood there was a difference between. The, the two, the two groups that can put free ads in. And, and so we had to give examples, and we gave a pretty good list of examples, I think. Uh, I just wanted to go back on the thing with the political parties. If the neo-Nazi party wanted to put an ad in for a fundraiser, would we be? Would we be obligated to put it in if we were to be doing ads for political parties?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think, again, to the discretion of the editor. And or the first.
Uh, yeah, I see a lawsuit on that. If we allow.
Yeah, lawsuits are anywhere and everywhere.
Um.
Yeah, we've been down that road a little bit.
I, I don't think we have to, i- i- if we can't reach consistent, I, I'm willing to keep on, on this. I just think it's, we're remiss in that, but it's. We can agree to disagree on that. I'm, I'm not looking to support the Nazi party.
All right, well. No, and I, I, I know that, okay? I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be. Uh, but the point is, is that they're a party as well. Political party.
All right, um, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the um.
Oh, yeah, I had one, one more thing. The one more thing is, uh, the one place that I have highlighted in this is on the. Last page, page five, and that's where it says, uh, and we haven't filled this in yet. For more information about Ashford Citizen policies and procedures, see such and such on the Ashford Town website. Or pick up a copy at Ashford Town Office, Offices. And this particular page is the one that's going in, we go into the Citizen every month. You know, this portion, that they, they have that section on page two.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a matter of filling in the address of, you know, where, where on the Ashford Town website, and to tell you the truth. I tried to solve this myself, and I went out there and I could not find the Citizen on the cit- the website.
I will talk to, to Karen and we'll come up with the title Ashford Citizen.
Yeah, so there's gonna be, it's the Citizen itself. I, I used to be out there. And this is something that is just getting, pointing people to the policies and procedures if they want to learn more.
I would just fill in there, Ashford Citizen, and I'll ask Karen, is Karen still with us? No.
Okay, sounds good.
To fill that in. All right, um, do I have a motion to accept the uh policies and procedures as submitted and dated August fifteenth? Two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion been made by Roger. Do I have a second?
I'll let you second that, Bill.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye, what I'll do is I will get the updated version out to you right after the meeting, so you have it to work with.
And, and good effort on this.
Yes, thank you, uh, for your work on that, Catherine. All right, next item under D, under old business is considered reinstatement of Ashford Citizen editor stipend. Um, as you know, we are, um, our previous editor had requested consideration of the board and. Um, of adding a statement which basically was a hundred dollars a week. Um, to cover cost and time, um, that she was putting in. We put it in our budget, we, we, we submitted it to the Board of Finance, and then they asked us to do cuts on that. And in the interim of that, we had a resignation submitted. Um, by the editor at that time, so we withdrew that, but we've got a new editor in place. We've asked her to be. Attracting your time, and I think, uh, it's only fair that we consider adding that stipend back in. I would suggest the same amount. Um, and I believe that we can make up that difference, uh, in our salary line item. Um.
Uh, refresh my memory one more time on the amount.
Um, fifty-two hundred a year. Which basically was a hundred dollars a week.
And how will it be paid?
Well, w- we were gonna let that be worked out. Once we started paying on it, we never did, uh, between the finance office. Um, I believe with our stipend that we pay Karen, um, for her work on the uh webpage. Um, her and, and Laura have worked out. She's paid monthly.
Okay, that makes sense. And you said it was a hundred a week?
A hundred a week is what we, we started.
Okay, all right, um.
And then.
I'd like to make that motion, I'd like to, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll certainly second that.
Okay, for discussion purposes, do we want to do that retroactive when she started or effective, uh, September?
Retro, retroactive to when she started.
Okay, I think that's.
That's, I consider that to be fair.
Okay.
I do have one question, I have a.
Friendly amendment?
Yes. Friendly amendment to, uh, what was it? When did she start?
Motion. Well, it would be retroactive to when she started. I believe this is, will be her fourth publication coming up in September, so. Whenever that was it, eight first?
June, July. I thought that, uh, I thought she started with June.
Okay, why don't we just say whenever she started?
Whether, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works, you know, um. Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, update on the transfer station, the only news that I've got. Um, they were gonna start on finalizing the positioning of the guard station. And finishing the road, but they have a shipping project they've got to get done first up on hillside that they started yesterday. Um, so that's still down the road. The uh new stickers did come in. Um, we've received them, so uh, Chris and I today and tomorrow will be working on a, an announcement notice. Um, and let Terry Wakeman take a shot at it too, uh, to try to get something into the Citizen for this coming issue.
Do we have the laptop and everything that they're going to need to use?
No, Chris is still working on that. Yeah, we, we've met with Savage, let them know what we want. We're working with some internet problems right now. Excuse me just one second. Chris, would you call Lynn and ask her to come up?
I'm sorry?
Would you call Lynn and ask her to come up? Excuse me, sorry. Uh, okay.
So laptops are still needed and we've got software issues going on.
Yeah, what, what, ideally, what we like to do is that laptop that's gonna be in the guard station. When I drive in and I present two forms of ID.
Mm-hmm.
The personnel laptop will pull it up and it either be from the, um, tax list or whatever form that we're gonna be using. To establish the eligible people for that. They would highlight that on the laptop, and then it would immediately report to Chris's computer here. So we'd have.
Right.
Two methods to be able to gauge who signed up and who's not.
Yeah.
Um, we're working with some wifi issues for that guard station right now, and we haven't worked those out yet.
You said two forms of ID?
Well, that's what I was thinking. I would think a driver's license and an ever-source bill or something like that that they can prove by, uh.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea. The, um. Uh, we're gonna need to get that into the Ashford Citizen that they're going to need to have that.
Yep.
When they get these new stickers.
Yep.
Um, no, regardless of how they get them.
Right. All right, I'm, I'm running short on time here now, so I'm gonna try to prolong here. Now, I apologize, I just, uh. Getting a vet's appointment is as far as getting a doctor's appointment are worse nowadays. Um, item left, discuss and or act and ask me, I don't have anything other than we are scheduled for a ten o'clock meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, for our next stage of this negotiation.
So how about, how about if we have a little special meeting, um, to, uh, make sure we've got everything finalized for ourselves?
You wanna, we can get together at nine thirty if you'd like.
Nine thirty?
I think the meeting's called for ten o'clock on the twenty-fifth.
Oh, I was thinking before then, uh, just, uh, to have a selectman's meeting go, this is it, we're, we're all done, and we can just. Submit it to them or whatever. If you feel we have to only show it to them on the day we meet with them, then. I guess we can try and do it that way.
I, I'm comfortable with that. I, I, I've sent you and Roger a copy of the draft. I don't, it's, they're not real co- um. I mean, it's not real complicated. I don't.
Yeah.
Shall we try to get together the half hour earlier, or do you wanna, wanna meet an hour earlier?
It's, uh. Hour earlier. Catherine.
On the twenty.
Don't care, if you want.
Bye.
All right, so we will try to meet at nine?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, um. Hi, Lynn.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us. Okay, uh, under new business, discuss and erect and scheduling of a town meeting. Uh, to approve the following, uh, Lynn, um, Byberg has been so kind to come up. And will give us an overview on her request for revisions to the Ashford ordinance governing dairy farm and, uh, orchard tax abatements. The floor is yours.
Okay, so the Board has left an app, the July twenty-fifth meeting approved the change to the application for the dairy farm. Exempt, but we have to do the second piece, which is to make that minor change to the actual ordinance. And I think it's gonna be part of the meeting with other things. It's just.
We've got a couple of things on the agenda.
Yes. So.
And.
Go ahead.
And do we have that right up? Has it written, been written out?
Yes, I emailed that to everybody, um.
Yeah, so.
Sorry.
Sorry, I came up with the, my veterans snuck here, um.
Okay.
Sorry, I grabbed the wrong, uh, thing. There's just one little change to the ordinance. Um, under number six. That we need to make that match with the application, that it's, um.
That's right.
The application needs to be taken the first time and then at the five-year renewal period.
Uh-huh.
That's right, we're disbanding the ten-year and going to a five-year.
Yeah, well, there, well, I'm sorry, you got the initial application, and then at the five-year period, um. It's going to, they're going to refile.
I remember you taking us through this, thank you.
Yes, and I apologize, I don't have that, the newest version with me.
So, Bill, are you, uh, are you asking us to approve that or putting that on the town meeting?
Uh.
I'm trying to get you out the door here.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, we can do both. Um, we could approve the, uh, changes as recommended by the Ashford Assessor. Uh, to appear on our next town meeting.
Yep, I, I make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? Paul, you had a question, have we?
I was just wondering what the change was, but she just answered it, and I'm pulling it up.
Okay.
Over the one.
Okay.
I can go see right after the meeting.
Okay.
I have another question.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Um, I know you came prepared, um. We're probably gonna have to put it off till our next daytime meeting, but Lynn has been doing, we, several months ago. We had discussed the possible options to benefit our veterans in town. And look to her to make some recommendations and go over some of whatever our options are. Um, I don't wanna rush you through this. Unfortunately, I'm dealing with a animal emergency right now.
Okay.
So I've gotta run out.
So just quickly, I can email each member the updated, uh, information on that?
That'd be terrific.
Right. Okay, and then if we wanna talk about it at the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I know daytime meeting is a convenience, so it won't be our next selectman's meeting.
The one after.
Put the one after that.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, people, what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'll stop down. No, big deal.
Okay, um, next item under new business, the second bullet is appropriation of startup funding. For the Ashford School Children Program, uh, recommended to the Board of Finance for consideration at their next regular meeting. Um, I believe what we decided to do was cover this under ARPA funds. Um, I believe what we decided to do was cover this under ARPA funds. That we will be also scheduling in our next town meeting. So. The, I believe the only.
And how much, and how much for startup?
Well, we've got a.
Because you ta- you talked about, you talked about monies coming in as soon as they sign, basically sign up. So I don't think we need all of the money for the program.
That's the moving target, I mean, I had put, in fact, on, on the sheet that I sent you folks. On some, some of my recommendations, I put twenty thousand, but that was just to throw a figure out there. I really don't think we're gonna need more than five thousand.
That's what they, they seem to be.
Um. You know, just, just for the start, because. If the monies don't come in, the program's not gonna happen, so we're gonna have monies in those funds. Those funds will be able to be put into that department. Once Board of Finance gives this authorization. Hopefully tonight, to set up those, that account. So.
Uh, I'd like to, I'm thinking, let's not just, let's not go with five thousand, let's go with ten thousand.
Okay.
Gives a decent buffer.
Not to exceed?
No.
Not to exceed ten thousand. Uh, uh, for consideration for this ARPA funds.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any more discussion on that, for this, so this would be a ten thousand, uh, proposed allotment from ARPA funds. To support the new municipal service. Program of the Astrid After School Program.
Correct.
Typically use that language because that's how ARPA addresses it, uh, municipal services.
Do we need to have the word startup in there so that there's an inference that should we need more?
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
You have that, Chris?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, next bullet is consideration of allocation of additional ARPA funding issues. Now.
Bill, Bill, it's ten o'clock.
Yeah, I, I've got about another ten minutes.
Okay. That's, well.
It's probably not enough to go through, but we can get a good jump and figure out where we're going. Um, I sent you a list. And also Catherine, thank you for your work, I got your, uh, updated sheet of what Chris.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we'll need to get that, those straightened out so we understand. By the way, when I put in that updated sheet. Wherever I said Board of Finance approved, it means we had a motion and a vote. And every one of them was unanimous.
Okay. All right, what I did was on my, and, and it was, I highlighted, uh, August fourteenth, cause it's kind of a working document, but. Um, I highlighted some things that I thought were priorities that we need to include on the, um. Town meeting call. Um, in line with what we've done with the Norton Hall, with the fire department. Um, the split units at the senior center, I think are important. Um, while the system has not failed, it's a over twenty-five year old system over there that's. Uh, starting to show its age. Uh, I think that's a good idea. The seventy thousand includes a little buffer for us. In case we have to do the same thing the fire department had to do. With their, uh, generator to accommodate the, uh. Additional, uh, requirements of the split units. The second highlighted item I have there is the reimbursement for the salary adjustment. That we did for our staff, um, that's allowed within ARPA. Um. I'm just gonna only talk to, and you guys jump in on these other things I had, but. Uh, citizen upgrades that two thousand. I believe covers our laptop expense, our new monitors and the software expenses. We gave ourselves a couple hundred dollar buffer there in case there's something we're missing.
Yep.
I think that's important to address. Um, redesign of ADA access to.
Norton. Are you speaking?
I am, can you hear me?
You broke, broke up there for a little bit, uh, for Norton, and so that's the front doors?
That's the front doors. To be honest with you, I have to do a little re- research, we're not allowed to do repairs, but I look at that as a. A new design, a redesign for ADA. Uh, accommodating under municipal services.
Yep.
What that would entail would be, I would hope we don't have to replace those doors, but we may have to. And to put in a new ADA assessable, uh, where both doors open.
Yes.
It's been called to my attention by the registrar's office, uh, that they're not in compliance. Um, we've never had some complaints. But technically that one door opening falls short by about an inch and a, a half of what it should be. So. There's some discretionary thing there, but I think it needs to be done one way or the other. The after school program, we've already discussed, we're gonna mark that down to ten. Um, I just put in here and you see some of these items, just for our own reference, for future reference. Some items that we're gonna have to address under CNR. Um, like if we wanna think about a new pickleball court, although I've, I've got some alternatives. And feedback I've got from some other people, a new school bus. Um. Um, a new ambulance, and we don't have to address that today, but I think we're gonna have to meet with the. The fire chief and go over some of the concerns we've got about ambulance replacement and their. Ability to follow three, typically. The ambulance is paid for by the fire department, but there are some funding issues that. I'd rather that Paul be able to elaborate on better than I can. Astrid Housing Authority, that's a given, we said we were gonna go along with that twenty-one thousand. With them. Um. And Paul is here, he can quickly, um, address the defibrillator. And. The bunker gear, Paul, if you could just, maybe you wanna step up here so Catherine can hear you.
Um, so real quick, I had. Um, are, all the defibrillators we currently have on all the apparatus. Will, uh, and meet to service life end beginning of next year. Um, we have one more contracted year on service. They all have a lifespan. So they get taken back to their manufacturer. Uh, we've been seeking alternative funding, um. To no avail at the moment, hopefully that changes maybe later today, but in the meantime. Um, I thought it would be best to try to, to, uh. To come up with a funding and since we still had some offer money, it certainly falls under the offer. Funding requirements, um, so I submitted a quote to Phil. Uh, the new equipment would be. Uh, just under fifteen thousand dollars, fourteen three. Um, in actuality, the request was for fifteen, but. If it all worked out, we would end up only using about twelve thousand five hundred. But I left that fifteen in there as a pad because you never know what, these are all state contracted prices, uh, through our vendor. Uh, who's the manufacturer. And then the bunker gear, um, I'm still waiting for an updated quote, but I gave Bill, uh, a list of. The li- the last orders we did. And then, excuse me, I love that shit big bro. The only one that was not current were the coats and pants. Um, I actually spoke with, with our vendor yesterday, he's still waiting from a, a hard number for the manufacturer. So we just added basically twenty percent to the last number. And it comes down to about five thousand dollars per set to equip the firefighter. Um, the. So that number, that, that forty thousand request would provide approximately eight full sets of gear. Um, the good news is, is that the, the, the gear I need to replace or add. Um, not everybody needs a new helmet. Um, or not everybody needs a new pair of gloves. But they all do need new coats and pants, which of course is the most expensive part of the whole package. Um. So. Um, that's whatever, basically what I did was I said, I, I did, we looked for our inventory. And we're still working on it, we still have members we're trying to catch up with. Yeah, once in a while, um. But basically, uh, I looked at it as that if, if I use that eighty, uh, that forty thousand dollar request, it gives me guaranteed. Eight sets, complete sets, or if I don't need complete sets. I can mix and match and appropriately accommodate up to eight, maybe ten people. Um, so that's where we're at, and just so you know. Bunker gear, the coats and the pants, after ten years, they're no longer allowed to be used for interior structure fire, firefighting. Uh, helmets, some are on as condition, so in other words, if somebody's helmet gets damaged, we have to throw it away. Um, the average helmet is about a thousand dollars right now. Um, and the, the things like gloves and boots, for instance, we had a member who stepped on a nail. Even though it was a steel shank boot, which they are, the nail still penetrated, now not only did the member get to go to the hospital, but we lost a set of boots.
Um, we can't get state funding for this?
Um. In what for, like, are you talking about grant funding or?
Yeah, any funding to support firefighters.
Um, there's some out there, but not, a lot of it doesn't, we don't meet the requirements. So.
Why is that?
And, and also, uh, uh, as far as writing a grant, um, it's a time constraint that I don't have enough time. Um, and I do look at them, a lot of them, the requirements, we don't meet the requirements because we don't have the proper number of employees or the proper number of volunteers. Um, et cetera.
Roger, Catherine, any questions there?
Well, I could, the, the total is more money than we have. So this would deplete all of our ARPA funds plus some. So right now, what's presented is not feasible.
I think you have to bear in mind that there are some of the things listed in the balance column. That we have not done. Like.
Right.
Um, the fire department service truck for fifty thousand. I mean, there are things that we may not spend all this money on. The leftover money. So there's more than what I have as a balance. But you're not gonna know until, what is it, December of two thousand twenty-four? When the money has to be committed.
Um, I'll, uh, I'll give you an example, Catherine, where there's. Some margins here, we had approved, um, up to seventy thousand. For the replacement and redesign of the entrance of Norton Memorial Hall. And our expectations were, we would do new pavers. We would contract it out where they would come in, do the excavation, demolition, whatever. Put in, uh, heating coils. And put in new pavers. Um. First of all, all last year, the two contractors that Joe had been worked out, both backed out of it. Uh, even after we increased the, the budget from forty to seventy thousand. Where that was our intent. Um. And I'm told it's more in the area of a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, if we could find somebody to do it. They're all recommending that, that the heating elements underneath that surface. Would be very, very costly to us, if we go with hot water. It will mean that all during the winter, our furnace at Norton Hall will have to be running. If we go with electricity. They're saying that that alone will probably increase our electric, electrical cost. In Norton Hall anywhere from thirty to fifty percent over what it is right now.
So the bottom line is you're saying we're not going to, uh, we're not looking at putting the heating underneath.
So what I'm doing now is, I'm, I'm looking at that project. I'm asking Public Works what we, what we can do to do the demolition. Take up the old ones, do the grading, put in the, the, uh, base services with our. Own and we're getting prices just to do pavers. Right now, I've got one bid in about thirty-two thousand to do the pavers. And I've got another one that I'm advised is gonna be in the area of thirty-five to forty, I don't know what the difference is or why. So, uh, there are some things, my point was Catherine, there is something. That we've figured a high point on that I don't think. We're gonna be spending that much. At the same time, I don't think that we should over commit. Particularly by town meeting for more money than we think we have allotted in ARPA.
Oh my God, no. That wouldn't make any sense at all.
No, no, I, I. Um.
No, but it would be good to know. Um, you know, which of these projects we're thinking are not going to cost what we already approved.
Now, another.
Now, you're just giving me a, you know, an instance here.
Yeah, another thing that I have on our list here for ten thousand. Um, is the new gutters in Norton Hall. That is obviously a repair. I'm, I'm suspect whether that would be eligible for ARPA funding. I think that's more CNR project capital expenditure on the town side. That if we need to pull it out of DPW.
One of the things I had mentioned before too was the basketball courts.
Um. Well, and I've gotta run, uh, but anyway, I. It's funny, cause since that meeting Catherine, and you did bring that up, I did have a meeting with Sherry York. Talking about. What her impact was or what her feeling was about pickleball courts. And she said she thought that half of our existing basketball courts at. Astrid Memorial Hall, uh, park could be adapted to the pickleball courts. So, that's one thought, I've also heard from Cindy. Uh, Ford and I talked to her about, you know, the old basketball court that's in the front of the school? Uh, that's not utilized, many of us use, utilize that as alternative parking. They're talking about that court being, um, redone as a pickleball court, so we, we have some alternatives. But, um. My suggestion is that we approve for town meeting. Going with the senior center split units, salary reimbursement. Uh, citizen upgrades. Um. Norton Hall design, uh, redesign of ADA access. Cut the Astrid School Program down to ten thousand. Um, go with the Astrid Housing Authority rent subsidy. Go with the defibrillators. Not do the gutters, put that into DPW. And. Either not go at this time or, or reduce the, uh, bunker gear. And see where we can come up with other funding sources.
Yeah.
And are you trying to get a decision today?
That's okay.
Well, I'd like one because we need something in order to call a town meeting. Um, if we wanted, if the board wants to consider this, and we could call a special meeting. Prior to us putting in a legal notice for the, for the town meeting that I, we need to do, get in before the end of the month. Uh, we can do that.
All right. Um, I think that would be, I think that would be a good idea. And the other part of this is, is on this spreadsheet that we got where it said that some of these, uh, other things were unapproved. Does that mean they were paid? And that they came out of ARPA? So they're already reflected as being out of it?
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think it does.
Bill, you gotta get going.
Yeah.
I, I've got.
So yeah, we'll have a, we'll have that special meeting, we can cover this.
Okay, Chris, do you? Oh.
She's on the phone.
I don't know if she has any tax refunds or not.
Okay. Sounds like a plan, can't wait.
Chris?
All right. Okay, thank you, but.
Chris, do you have any tax refunds?
No, there are no tax refunds, but the two thousand dollars for citizen upgrades for equipment and software.
Yeah.
I already figured that in my. Spreadsheet. I included that two, if you look on the second page. We actually spent one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. So that has to go. I mean, then go to town meeting and it can go to town meeting at the one thousand seven forty.
All right, well, we're talking about a hundred and sixty dollars here, I.
Yeah.
I gave ourselves a little motion, do we wanna adjourn or do you want me just to excuse myself and you guys can finish this up?
I think we should adjourn, I should, I think all three of us should be.
Okay.
Involved in. Yep.
All right, uh, so moved.
We've got a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you folks.
I.
Good one.
Good luck, good luck, Bill, at the vet.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, you're on my, you're on my mind.
Thanks Catherine.
Phone going off, remind you to get out of here, go. I'm just, I'm just as bad as you. I'm just, I'm just as bad as you, guilty as charged.